And made it when the, when the council votes to do something, that'll have to be in there also.
That 10 person deal came, that comes from the governor?
It comes from the governor. It happened about three hours ago where he changed it to only curbside or take, uh, takeout, drive-through dining and limit, limiting 10 days. He also suspended school in the state of Texas indefinitely.
And then we can't walk around?
No. He declared that for the state of Texas as a whole.
And who's gonna monitor to make sure that the restaurants are gonna be closed for dining after tomorrow night at 12:00, midnight?
I don't think we will, Councilman. I think, I don't, wouldn't like to see our policeman going around saying shut your dining room up, you know, unless some complaint comes about or whatever. But I think the restaurants will go ahead and comply with the, with the closure.
Well, I hope everybody does.
I'm sure it will be covered well in the media. We have local newspapers here. We're on Facebook Live. I'm sure the word will get out. And I think that the restaurants in town, a lot of them have already started to do that. I predict that all of them will be cooperative about that order.
Some of the restaurants people aren't going to because they think it's already closed. So again, I don't anticipate a problem. We'll probably ask some city personnel to go around and remind them of the fact that we've, probably tomorrow, that we've, we've had to issue this declaration.
Mayor, in relation to that, looking at section seven of our declaration where it will now say there's 10 persons, no more than 10, and the fact that there may be parties anyway. Those things are always handled on a complaint basis anyway. So like if, if somebody's having a party and it's a whole mess of cars, it's very likely that neighbors are going to call and our police will have to make a stop by and say, hey, guys, you know, realize we're in this all together.
And I think, I think Mr. Tarky mentioned the parks. In our management declarations, we've already closed the parks. So now we, like he said, we can't stop people going out there and having a picnic, but I think we can stop any gatherings of a large number of people. But we didn't want to completely close the park. Any other questions?
The three main city parks, the big ones.
Three. Well, probably, I guess, all of them.
And the original notice that I'll be covering here in a few minutes, it had to do with reservations at the three main parks. But we can put out another notice that the parks are either closed, whatever council desires, to the general public, or just a reminder that you can't have groups in the parks larger than 10. They do encourage outdoor activity because you do need to be out and about and moving and so we can either look at it either way, but originally we just closed them to reservations.
I've asked the city manager.
So what's, what's gonna happen if, say, do, say we do have people go out to the city park and there's 20 people there?
If there's, if there's a complaint that comes in that there's 20 people there, law enforcement will go out and remind them that by order of the governor, they're not allowed to have more than 10 there and they'll be asked to vacate. And if they don't vacate, then I'm sure there'll be issued a citation because one of the things that's happening is that the, they're limiting jails all around and who can be taken to jail. You have to have violated certain crimes to even be taken to jail at this point simply because of the spread of the virus and the manpower and things to keep things under control.
I would hope whatever enforcement we have will be friendly enforcement, you know, reminding people that you can't gather in more than 10 and hopefully they'll look care of it.
Well, I just hope that people realize we're only doing this for their own health and safety, but then again, you know, who, who else is gonna complain? Who's not?
Well, you'll hear, sitting man here in a minute, of the plans and all, and you'll see that we've covered a lot of the bases.
Whenever, whenever you say city-owned parks, of course, I'm assuming that we're, we're also talking about Sunset, the skate park, the dinosaur park?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir. We would be talking about young men and we would be talking about Sunset Nature Trail. Again, it's just, if, if they limit it to people under 10 and they, they think about the social distancing, that's very important. We're still, and I think just a human nature, we're not accustomed to, one of the other comments that was said during citizens' comments, it's very difficult to think about social distancing with people that you're working with and you're around all the time. It's just we're, we're doing the best that we can as staff to adapt. It is a very fluid situation. At this point, we're not changing hour by hour, we're changing minute by minute. And we're trying to be as fluid and as flexible as we can to both keep the citizens in service, but also to make sure that we are, as Councilman Villa said, trying to provide a safe environment for their own good, but also for our staff's good. If we're having to send police officers out, then we're potentially exposing them to risk and they can't show up at every gathering of 20 in their personal protective equipment that we are also purchasing to keep them safe from this virus so we have first responders on the streets.
I have asked city manager after the meeting today to go out and send a similar message to the citizens through Facebook. Unfortunately, the newspaper just came out today, so we got a week before they're able to report a lot of this, but we'll ask her to send out a message like she did the other day on Facebook and so to alert the citizens as much as possible of this new enforcement. So I am open for a motion to end our declaration in those areas that we, that I spoke of. The 30-day extension, 10-day gathering, 10-person gathering, what did I miss? Restaurants.
And not to close our parks, but to limit the gatherings to 10. Leave our parks open.
Yeah.
And, right. No reservations, as she mentioned, but leave them open.
Now, you'll hear from her in a minute that we were already closing the library and the rec center and the, and the, uh, dockport's staying open, but...
To a certain extent, yes, sir.
You'll hear a whole lot from her in a minute about what's already been done and what the plans are, so.
So I make that motion.
I second.
I got, I got one question before we approve this. Just, just thinking here, if, if you asked whether that was, whether our parks were gonna be open, okay, what if, what if we, we continue to have them open? Sunset Park. And I've got two of my kids there and he has two, or three kids there and before you know it, it's more than 10. I mean, this is gonna be individual, different families. It's not that they're all together. I'm just, I'm just asking, what, what, what are they gonna do?
I think, I think we can be a little flexible and say it's gatherings of 10. Your two kids will probably be playing in one area. His three kids would probably be playing in another area. So you could look at that potentially as long as there's social distancing, that it's a group of two and a group of three. It's about if, now if those all combine for five and another family comes in with five, then they're gonna have to disperse and not be able to gather as a group of 10. And we're even having to do that within our own, we're supposed to be having a, a tour of all of our vacant, or not vacant, but our properties that are for sale tomorrow. And we had to send out a notice when the governor's order came out that, to all of those people, that said, we can't have any more than nine on the tour because we'll also have a staff member potentially. And if they do a tour of the post office, we're gonna have to go in and scout how many people are in the post office and they may have to go in one at a time or two at a time to look at the facility. So we're being very, again, fluid in how we're trying to adjust this and flexible because again, the kids are, some of them are going stir crazy and actually need to be out and getting some activity. They're used to going from activity to activity. And if there's two of them here and four of them here, I think that's a little bit of flexibility about the order of 10. I think it is just a gathering, I think he even uses that word, is a gathering of 10. And I would say a gathering of 10 is 10 of them standing or, you know, five-on-five basketball. That's a gathering of 10, if that makes sense.
So even, even on our, not necessarily city-owned property, Kim, but if an individual's gonna have a wedding, I mean, that applies to them also?
It applies to everything.
No matter what?
No matter what. And that, again, that's not coming from the city, that's by order.
I understand. I just, I just wanna, that's why I'm asking, because I wanted to make it clear that we're not the ones coming up with all these restrictions or whatever.
Yes, sir.
You know, of interest, unless I misread the previous order the governor had, places of worship don't, aren't affected by this gathering figure?
Yeah.
So.
Not yet.
Not yet. If I could clarify that in my new proclamation.
Mayor, just to be clear, that we are adding, I guess section 10, or adding language at some point that restricts the dining in. Okay. And just a comment reflecting the conversations and stuff, I think it's really important for the public at large to understand that this is a time for the public at large to take a lot of responsibility. It's just, you know, we can do things as a city and as a state, but this is a time for the public at large, you know, to take a lot of responsibility.
As I mentioned, I think we're being very proactive in this and very careful, but again, only for the safety of our, of our citizens. And for some of these things, I don't like, some of these things, a lot of people don't like, but it's for safety purposes. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Do we have any further discussion?
No, sir.
If I'm paying the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same thing. Carries. Going on to item five, which is the update I mentioned, update on measures by the city of Hondo to address COVID-19 coronavirus pan epidemic. Kim Davis.
Well, good afternoon, mayor and council and guests. Have a few comments about what we've been doing, but before I say anything, I do want to send out a thank you to staff. I know by the time I get through all of this and all the questions, I will have forgotten to do that. Valetia, who's over here doing Facebook Live, has kept everybody up to date on our website and social media as we're sending those out. The staff up front has been inundated with questions and we've been answering those as they come in. The executive staff has been willing to meet at the drop of a hat to help adapt and adjust to what's going on and to be thinking proactively about what's happening in our community to make sure that we're prepared. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank all of them publicly for all that they have done because this has not been the easiest week or so. With that said, I'm gonna go ahead and some information may be repeated, I'm trying to do it, in the timeline that the notices were sent out. The library was the first office that we opted to close, the library and the rec center, basically at the same time. The library had already removed all soft surfaces and things, but the American Library Association came out and stated that even though this was a challenge because libraries provide a lot of access for things, that they felt it was best because this is a large communal gathering place and there are a lot of surfaces and we're just not sure yet how this virus reacts to different surfaces, that we go ahead and close the library. So the library staff is still working. If you call the library and you have a question about how do I download an ebook to my Kindle or Amazon or whatever, they're still available to help with those questions. They're going to be doing additional training. What tends to happen is we get so busy in our day-to-day activities that training is often something that we tend to put off. And so in, in their time that they don't have something else to be doing, we will be doing additional training online. There is a travel restriction. No city staff is doing any travel that's nonessential. If there's some emergency management meeting out in Austin or something, of course, we would attend, but no one from staff is traveling. Additionally, the library staff will be doing things that they normally do in August, which is a deep cleaning of the library and a weeding. We normally do those things after the summer programs. They'll probably have to come back and do the deep cleaning again, but we would rather do a deep cleaning now because we just don't know what germs have been brought in to the library thus far. We opted, as mayor mentioned, out of an abundance of care again, to, to close the community center, the recreation center, and city parks one, two, and three to reservations. The front office staff took initiative. They called every single person that had a reservation between now and June. They offered them two options. One was to get a full refund on their deposit because again, this is not something they had control over. And two was if they wanted to go ahead and reschedule, they were given the option of doing that at that time. And we told them if for some reason they reschedule and something happens and we have to extend the closure, that we would call them back and reschedule again. The same thing happened with the community center. I know there are several groups that meet there regularly, but unfortunately, it was just one of those circumstances again where there are surfaces and things that this virus can continue to have, have as a habitat and grow and develop. So we wanted to make sure that we kept people safe there. Staff again, will continue to do projects, especially in the recreation center. They'll be prepping for our summer programming. They'll be prepping the pool and working there and getting things ready to go. And then all those little projects again, that we tend to put off as well as training. The next thing we, we looked at was city hall. Of course, this is the main hub for the city of Hondo. We didn't want to close completely, but we felt it was necessary to do something to make sure that we protect not only the customers coming in and exposing themselves to each other, but additionally our staff. So we have effective, it was at 5:00 PM on 3/18, we closed the lobby of city hall. And what we will be doing is taking all of our customers through the drive-through window. So if someone has a question about elections, if someone has a question about the cemetery or paying their utility bill, or just any general question that they don't want to pick up a phone and call and ask, we're routing them through the drive-through. Something else that we're doing is we're dividing our city hall staff into two. The reason we're doing this is so we have half the staff here and half the staff will be working from home on various projects that we have going. And the reason for that being is if someone gets exposed, then only half of the staff is exposed and the other half then can come in and be split again into, to make sure that we are able to continue to provide services to the community. There are also some options. This also pertains to municipal court. Municipal court has been postponed indefinitely and that again, was by, I believe it was the governor's office. None of these decisions again, have been made lightly. We know that at times it's an inconvenience to our customers. There may be some lines at the window. We haven't seen that thus far. There are options to pay your utility bill online or via telephone and those are on our website. Keep in mind everything that I've talked about. We have done a Facebook message about and we've also posted it on the front page of our webpage so people can click a link that says coronavirus updates. Our animal control shelter. We are going to stop adoptions for the short term. We will still be working to place animals in rescues. We won't be taking owner surrenders. They will still have the quarantine cage open in case there's a dog bite or something. Again, we're gonna split our two ACOs. It'll be one week on, one week off. And again, it has that same strategy of hoping to not run into a shortage of staff. And we also give information about where they can call, like this one, they would call Detective Sergeant Brandon Tier for more information, or if they had questions about the services. The next one is just kind of a summary of up to that point, everything we had done. Again, all of those things we had, were things that we had put into place to protect people. We worked with the police chief and the lieutenant, who's our emergency management coordinator, had some discussions about senior staff. We're gonna divide our senior staff, so half senior staff is here and half is working remotely, again, with the same strategy of not trying to, if something happens, have everybody out at once. The sheriff's office and the PD have been coordinating closely and are mirroring each other. They have been in touch. And one of the concerns we had was, well, what happens if somebody in the PD comes in and infects everybody? The sheriff's office has offered their services and vice versa. We have been reaching out to a number of partners throughout the community. We are in direct contact every day with the school district. We're in direct contact every day with the hospital and working hand-in-hand again with the sheriff's department and the county. We participate every day between four and five o'clock on a call with the county to get the latest updates. The Public Works facilities is the next thing that I'd like to cover. They're going to be doing a very similar thing with splitting shifts. They're not taking any visitors to the lobby. If someone has a question regarding code or development services, they will be coming and they can either do it telephonically, they can do it via email, or we have the option to do either Skype or FaceTime so they can have a one-on-one conversation. If we need to receive plans or deliver permits, again, all of those things will go through the window here at city hall to present kind of that barrier. But again, there won't be an interruption in services, which is a nice thing. The staff at the Public Works has come up with a schedule where they'll be working extended hours and they'll be working Monday through Saturday. Originally, I think earlier, told you seven, it was a seven. It's actually a six-day work week and that way we don't see an interruption in services. Just because the virus exists doesn't mean water leaks are gonna stop or outages are gonna stop or any of those things. But again, the same strategy is protecting the staff and making sure we have ample staff to provide and continue to provide services to the community. The police department will be working in two locations. The, moving into the new building couldn't have come at a better time. We have separated the chief and the lieutenant. Primarily, they're not gonna be at the same calls or they're gonna maintain social distancing. The only reason they're both here today is because one is the police chief and the other is the emergency management. One will be officing at this office, one will be officing at the office out in the Public Works or the Public Services Complex. That is a fully functional office. Again, they will not be allowing people to come into the back of the facility. They both have glass barriers. They will not be taking anything that's not a non-emergency call. And again, that is to stop the spread and the social contact. They will be ordering equipment. I think the fact they've already ordered it, that should be in any time now, that they'll be able to suit up if they get a call that says it's a possible case and they have to report, that will protect them with respirators and things that will prevent the spread of the disease to them. And this is not just the policy of the Hondo Police Department. This is what the sheriff's office with respect to non-emergency calls will primarily be handling those over the phone via in-person. The airport, the terminal building has been closed to anyone who is not a pilot. It will not be having anyone in the lobby. The staff will be split into two groups. The techs will be onsite, but they will be mowing in separate areas and using separate pieces of equipment because again, we're not sure how it's transferred via metals yet. So they'll be using separate pieces of equipment. One staff member will be assigned per week to do the quality fuel checks and that staff person will be responsible if we have any corporate jets come in for fueling. At that time, they will implement the use of gloves and any other distancing and of course, disinfectants and things that they need. And they'll be using a portable credit card machine that we can easily sanitize between uses. Then the next week, the other tech will be doing that. So again, we've even separated them in two different offices. Usually they office in the same office in the building. We've put them in two separate offices. And then Ryan will be splitting his time with his administrative staff so we always have the phone covered and again, so both of them aren't out at the same time. We will not be doing full service for our current tenants, for just general aviation planes who can pull up. Corporate jets can't do that because of their wingspan. So anyone who is a general aviation tenant will have to do self-service fuel at this I've already mentioned the Public Works team. We have some good news. Our solid waste will continue to function as normal. There has been no reduction or any discussion of reduction in solid waste pickup. Republic Services is still well-staffed and going to be managing that. They will still be doing our brush pickup. They said that they have seen an uptick in the amount of garbage that's being put out and a lot of it's not being put in the appropriate containers. So they did ask us to share a message with the public that says, even if you just need to do it for the time being, please try to contact the city and either get a second poly cart for a short term if you think it's gonna be an ongoing thing for you because they are only obligated to pick up what is in the appropriate receptacle. They will continue brush pickup. Just a reminder for everyone, brush pickup is the first full week of the month. Please don't put your brush out early. And that will be for this upcoming month. It will be April 6th through the 10th. And brush pickup for your area is the same day as your trash service. Now, because they are continuing all of these services and because of health risk concerns, they are going to temporarily stop the recycling drop-off point. And again, that has to do with staffing issues for them, but also the safety of their employees. We did send out a me, a message on social media today and it will be going out later today on iInfo. There's a lot of misperception regarding public water systems. This virus has not been proven to be spread through any public water system. I know that there is a lot of panic right now, people going out and stockpiling water. We want to reassure you that our very skilled water team is handling, keeping our water disinfected. There are no issues with our public water system and drinking water. And in fact, we encourage you to not have to go out and spend money to buy bottled water when you, you have safe drinking water at home. So again, we are providing these messages via social media, Facebook page, City of Hondo, and we are also sharing them on our City of Hondo website. You can also get additional information at Go Medina and at the county website. But as soon as we get updates from the county, we are sharing those, of course, through our network. One of the things that I do want to remind everyone of or say out loud so everyone understands is we will be paying city employees through this whole process. We have one gentleman who, timing unfortunately, he ended up in New York in a hotspot on vacation to visit his daughter. And when he comes back, he's gonna have to do a mandated 14-day quarantine. We are giving him administrative leave for that because again, we don't feel that this is something that is an employee's fault and our employees are our greatest resource. So a lot of these decisions that we're making are about being able to provide stellar customer service while protecting our employees to the best of our ability. So with that being said, if anyone has any questions?
You might mention that our heritage and our far-right thing have been postponed.
Oh, yes, I forgot that. We have also put out a notice that Storytime, Tiny Tots, all library programming, all rec programming has been canceled until further notice. Storytime, I'm happy to say, they actually did a Facebook Live Storytime. Normally, we have about 20 kids come in. We had 1,700 views on our FaceTime Storytime. So we may keep that as something that we do regularly anyway. The Heritage Festival, the Hangar Dance, the car show, and the...
Race.
I was trying to think of the right name. The airstrip attack have all been postponed. I believe it's back to November?
September.
September. Okay, that's right. Labor Day weekend. So Labor Day weekend, all of those activities have been moved to Labor Day weekend. We worked with the site or the race promoter. They were very happy to be accommodating and postpone. We rebooked the band. We just switched dates. So everything is still a go for when September rolls around. Probably will not do the Heritage Festival same day. Probably will look at trying to reengage the museum and seeing if we can still have the Heritage Festival at the museum. But the airstrip attack, the race, or the car show and the Hangar Dance will all still be taking place September 5th and 6th. And I just want to say that I, I want to thank all of council and everybody for letting us be this proactive. I know a lot of people aren't as caught up to where we are right now and we appreciate that you've given us the, the liberty to really work hard on putting this plan together to keep everybody safe.
Questions?
Mayor, I've got a, I hate to keep going back to this, but I guess something that we need to, in my opinion, we need to talk about so we can get it cleared up. Back to the, the, the dining for the restaurants. How are, how are you gonna handle the local businesses other than restaurants? Like ATB, Walmart, convenience stores? I mean, at times there's more than, I know for a fact at ATB... I mean, at times, there's more than, I know for a fact, at HEB, there's a ton, there's a lot, a heck of a lot more people than 10 people. What, I mean?
I know that some states have gone to, their governors issuing declarations that the only thing that can be open are fuel stations and grocery stores. And I do think they make some allowances for those particular entities. I don't know what this particular governor's office is thinking. I do know that if and when it comes to that point about businesses and what businesses should be open and closed, that's going to be higher than my pay grade. That's going to be council. That's going to be the governor's office. That's going to be the public health office, and those people making those recommendations.
So, for right now, the only, the only, the only businesses that we're, that we're going to enforce this on is restaurants?
That is my understanding. That is what council passed, was just restaurants right now.
So, the local bars and the local convenience stores and Walmart?
I do think that the bars are included. I do think are considered as part of the restaurants.
So, the local bars applies to that also from the state? Right, I understand that. I just want to make sure that we get this, everybody gets this clear. I apologize, but
No, that's okay. I'd rather you ask
I just want everybody to be on the same page.
The whole point of having these conversations and trying to generate conversation is so everybody knows what we know at this time, and what we're able to share, and the information that we're getting.
I think the gyms have to close. People like that, where you have a lot of gathering, and it's also, I guess with the gyms, a lot of sweating where it can go.
Do we have to mention all these places in general? Because we only, we only mention restaurants. We didn't mention, like Eric said, the bars, gyms, the, well, the gyms would cover the exercise places.
I think we will ask our attorney to prepare this new declaration, and I'm sure he'll put those kind of things in there. I think council just has to be willing to go along with what, by law, he puts in there.
And again, I think
I understand that, Mayor, but if we're going to wait till the attorney do all this, what are we going to do now? Just
That's going to be done today.
And Mayor, if I may, I don't know who was able to listen to the governor at noon, but some of what we're talking about, and some of what we're enacting, has already been superseded by the state.
I understand that.
So, we have to We have to do this in our
But, you know, maybe the whole public's not informed about this, John.
Right.
That's what I'm saying, you know? Yes, the governor talked about it three hours ago, but does everybody know about it? Does everybody understand what was said? You know, that's
It's a very difficult situation. I mean, we're doing everything through Facebook and whatever, what we're doing, which pretty well parallels what the state's doing, but to get the word out to everybody, we're doing the best we can.
And I will say this, we did send out a mailing to every utility customer in the city of Hondo. That was a general blanket statement about, and this was early on, this was like the first or second day when we started this process. We sent out a letter to every single utility billing customer that talked about all of the requirements from CDC at that time. I think at that time, the CDC guidelines were 500, 250, and 50. And since then, it's obviously changed. And so, as we get information, and there's a big change, as Mayor said earlier, we will be putting out another notice on social media. And what we did was just basically take that notice from social media, put it in a letter, and mailed it out to our customers, and are hoping that the customers are reading and sharing that information. I do think that we will plan on reaching out to the local radio station as well and asking if we can just have some airtime to share what the city has done and what we plan on doing in the future as things develop. But again, it's a very fluid situation. Today, it may be that we're gatherings of 10, and two days from now, it may be that we are shelter at home. We're taking our lead from the governor's office and trying to follow that and share the information that the city, the things the city is specifically doing, but also things that the governor's office is doing, that supersedes what we're doing. Right now, we're, we have a primary focus on city facilities and city staff, and making sure we're getting the word out about that. Now that the focus needs to start, now that we've taken what we can about our facilities, it's going to be to keep the public updated as things change from a state level or from the CDC. So, again, we'll be sending out another letter, probably tomorrow. We'll send out another letter that talks about what was in this proclamation today, and what that means, what that looks like in reality for individuals, and encouraging them to continue to follow the social distancing, the washing of their hands for a specific length of time, the using hand sanitizer when that's not available. One of the other things that we're going to have to do is now that we're down to gatherings of 10, we will, as a city, have to start looking at how do we have council meetings? So, we will be exploring ways that we can do council meetings via a conference call line that citizens can call into, and they can be, they can be put in the queue for questions, for citizens' comments. And we'll have to be looking at some way to host council meetings via telephone calls, because if it's just the people that normally sit on that dais, we have the six of you, plus me, plus the city secretary, plus an attorney, so we could have one person in the audience. So, we're going to have to adapt, and that's the next step now that we've come down to 10. That's the other thing that we're going to be looking at tomorrow and making people know, is, okay, this is how we're going to have council meetings until the ban is lifted or it's increased back to gatherings of 50 or 100, or however those are eased. So, we're hoping to partner again. And again, I want to emphasize that this isn't just the city of Hondo getting this information out. This is why we're talking to the hospital on a daily basis. This is why we're talking to the school district on a daily basis. This is why chief communicates with the sheriff's department on a daily basis. And we're talking to the county, and we're talking to the judge, and hopefully collectively, between all of us, we're getting the word out, and they're not just having to rely on the city of Hondo as their one source of information.
Any other questions?
Yes. Can you do me a favor?
Yes, sir.
Obviously, we had maybe a little concern or comments about the election. Can you walk us through, and somebody, Street Attorney mentioned something about possibly getting fined, so forth and so on. This election that we're doing, was that also sent down from the state, or is it something that we, that we generated, or something that we wanted?
It was, it was not something that we started. How this originated was the governor has, because of the situation, the governor has had to relax some requirements about, one, elections, and two, about Open Meetings Act. That's why today, we're able to broadcast outside and, you know, not try to fit everybody in one room and do things like that. So, the governor said that they were going to give counties the option, or municipalities even, the option, to not have their elections in May, and that it would be on a municipality and county determination, case by case. Well, because we contract, we do not have all of the equipment to do an election, we're dependent upon what the county's decision is going to be. Preliminary discussion with the county has been that they are going to postpone the election, all of it, till November. And so, if the county chooses to do that, county would have to take that action first, and then the city of Hondo would then come in and say, "We're making the decision because we don't have a lot of options not having the equipment and a way to actually run the election without the equipment." That we're going to have to follow suit then, and then postpone our election until November as well.
Let me explain one thing, too, that's been, I've been asked several times, what gives the authority that the governor and the county judge and the mayors be able to do some of these declarations? Under the State of Texas Emergency Act of 1975, it gave these powers to the governor and to county judges and to the mayors to issue these proclamation declarations. So, it's not something that the governor or we are doing on our own. It is, it is in that act of 1975. So
Yes, sir.
To add to what you said, in reading the information, which we get daily from Texas Municipal League, reference the elections. There was a comment about the need to clarify some of the possibilities, were there statutory limitations that would come into play after May? And so, my question in regard to that would be, you know, the only thing we have other than place elections is the
Charter amendment.
Charter amendment of elections. We don't have any bond issues or anything like that that are expiring at this point, but those are things that the county will have to take into account as they make
Yes, sir. And, and we don't have any bond elections or anything at this point. The only things we have are the two open positions, and then the charter amendments, as you mentioned.
The county has, has to be concerned about the primary runoff elections, and I don't know how they're going to handle that, but I don't think they have anything themselves, other than that.
Another thing that I forgot to mention in my update, unfortunately, was the South Texas Regional Training Center. The Southwest Texas Junior College, who teaches multiple classes out there, has suspended all of their classes, including our new welding program, because we have several other entities like Workforce Solutions Alamo, who at this time is a very important entity for a lot of people who are being displaced because their business is closing and furloughing them, or whatever. Because they're staying open, we are keeping that building open to Workforce Solution Alamo customers, and the staffing there, again, will be alternating, so they're not both in on the same days. They will either be working remotely, or one of them will be working from here when they're not over there, simply to keep the building open and have a staff presence so Workforce Solutions Alamo can continue to do their job.
Well, that's it, unless y'all have any other questions of Ms. Davis.
Welcome for feedback or anything you think we have forgotten.
Mayor, I just want to say, I know I speak for all, thanks to the manager and the mayor, and the work that's been done to get us to this point, and going forward, and just to express appreciation on part of the council and the city.
Absolutely. Because I want to thank the public out there. They've been very receptive, very, very cooperative. I really feel for some of the businesses, especially the restaurants, but everybody's been understanding and cooperative, and from a city standpoint, we appreciate that very much. So, no other action to take, I'll open for a motion to adjourn.
Some second.
Have a second. Hold on, if they ever say aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, public, for being with us today.